Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We added the words "one nation under God."
Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit, which is to your left of the room. In the event of emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. Extra copies are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or the representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If the case is a public hearing, it will be open to the public for input, at which time anyone wishing to come to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any of the public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to the public input and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input will be allowed at that point. So with that, before we start tonight, I'd like to make a quick introduction. In the audience, we have Mike Hobbs. Please stand, Mike. Mike has been appointed, newly appointed, as an alternative member to the board. He will fill in in case one of the members cannot make the meeting, so we appreciate it and thank you for volunteering.
Welcome.
And with that, Michelle, would you introduce the first case?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number PB-1702-1. Upon the matter of request by Delta Sonic Car Wash Systems, Inc., for preliminary final site plan approval to modify development of the existing Delta Sonic Car Wash site on premises 611 East Ridge Road in a C business district that includes expansion of the facility onto an adjacent parcel located wholly in the city of Rochester on premises 1565 Hudson Avenue.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Oats with Delta Sonic Car Wash. We are here for site plan approval for a proposed redevelopment for the existing Delta Sonic facility on East Ridge Road. We are taking the existing 1.3 acre facility and are going to be combining it with the adjacent 2.3 acre OTB facility. So the two pieces of property are the existing Delta Sonic and then the existing off-track bedding facility. The off-track bedding is located in the city of Rochester. However, since it's a cohesive development, I'm just going to run through the overall project with some of the things in the city, just so the board and everyone can see how it all flows together. We are going to be proposing to demolish the off-track bedding building in this location and combine the two parcels into one. On the Arundacoit side, we are going to be eliminating the existing gas canopies in this location, and then we're going to be installing approximately 20 new self-service vacuum stations. In the city's property, we are going to be building a new gas canopy, convenience store, oil lube, and interior detail facility. And then we're also going to be significantly modifying the entrance to the car wash, which is probably the biggest improvement overall for the property. The existing car wash tunnel is going to be remaining in the same location. However, instead of the cars coming in off of East Ridge Road, wrapping to the south end of the site and then entering the car wash right here, we are going to be funneling the traffic into the city Rochester's parcel and then entering from the back in this location here. What this is going to do is this is going to take all the stacking for the car wash and keep it on our site, so there's going to be no more with the cars backing up and on busy days getting out towards East Ridge Road. So even if the car wash starts to back up to the point today where it starts to get onto the road, that's only at approximately this location here. We still have dedicated car wash stacking, probably double the amount we have today here. And then on extremely busy days, there is still significant amount of additional stacking within the property. In addition, we'll be doing two new entrances and exits off of Hudson Avenue. What this is also going to do is while we will be maintaining the entrance on East Ridge Road here and the exit on East Ridge Road, the exiting traffic here is going to be just cars leaving the car wash, so there's no longer going to be the crisscross of people leaving the gas station, trying to come across the car wash exit while cars are leaving as well. And it's really going to take the internal traffic flow and separate it out, so the cars leaving the car wash, you're not going to have to see if there are cars coming from the gas canopies, where are people going, you're going to kind of have a dedicated area for drying of the cars in this location here, still without cars kind of coming across and leaving. In regards to the look of the canopies, they will mimic the five existing canopies that are up along East Ridge Road. This is an architectural elevation of what it will look like up against the existing car wash building here. And then these are two other locations we have with the freestanding car wash as well. They kind of mimic the Delta Sonic blue that we currently have out there, and we overall think it'll be a real improvement for the site. It's a project we're very much excited for and happy to answer any questions the board has.
Sure. With that, we'll start, Mr. Huber. Any questions?
Since you're moving the gas over to the Hudson Avenue, you're going to have to dig up the tanks?
Yes, all the tanks will come out from this location here, and we'll install new tanks.
Mary, please put your mic over there.
The new, the tanks that are in there are only approximately three, four years old, so we'll take them out. We're not going to reuse them here, the timing doesn't work. We'll take them out, we'll save them, we'll use them in another location once they get recertified.
How long do you think that'll take?
The overall construction will probably take approximately 12 to 18 months. It'll kind of have to be done in phases. We don't, we don't like even when we're redoing projects like this, make it appear that we're completely closed. So the plan will be to pretty much get this entire property open while we're keeping the car wash and the gas on this side open. Once we get all of this done, we'll kind of shut off this side of the car wash, probably close access from East Ridge Road for a while, bring all the cars in off of Hudson to get the self-service gas stations up, but keeping the exit out of the car wash there. It actually works out from a construction standpoint, being two separate properties, it makes the phasing of it actually really, really simple compared to some other sites we've done where we're literally ripping up the middle of our parking lots and trying to keep cars still around them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Plamel?
I just have a quick question for you. You said 12 to 18 months and phases.
Yes.
Provided you got, you received approval tonight, when would this start and when would it end?
We still have to finish site plan approval with the city of Rochester, but our plan would be to start April, May, pretty much as soon as we can get the site plan approval, get our building permit, plan submitted, and pull a building permit, we're ready, we're ready to go. It's definitely a project we are excited about, and we're going to hit the ground running to try to get a lot of it done this year and really try to beat next winter as much as we can.
Mr. Richards?
Just a couple of things. On part one of the EAF, section three zoning, the C4 section, I just think these are two mistakes on here. You're listing the town of Arundacoit School District as your, one of your school districts, and also the Ridge Culver Fire Department as the responding fire department. Are those correct information, or should that be West Ridge Road and St. Paul?
I tried to figure that out. It may, it could be a mistake. I was trying to, I looked at the fire districts that looked like they served it, and that's what I thought, but I definitely could be mistaken.
I'm a member of St. Paul Fair District. It is St. Paul's district.
Okay.
I just thought maybe those should be corrected, just so the record reflects that it is correct.
Absolutely, I appreciate you pointing, pointing that out.
If folks are walking on East Ridge Road past this, they're still walking past traffic that's entering and exiting, right?
Yes, there is. The cars entering and exiting off of East Ridge Road, the entrances aren't going to change, however, the biggest difference would be, I would say, a majority of the entering traffic is going to be no longer coming off of East Ridge Road, will now be coming in off of Hudson. And really, I would think the only traffic coming in off of East Ridge Road would be anyone coming from the west on East Ridge, because pretty much all the gas, the convenience store, oil lube, detail shop are going to really be more on the Hudson side. So if you were coming, say, southbound up Hudson, you'd obviously turn into the site left. Or if you were coming, and if you were coming from the north, heading south on Hudson, you'd still coming down there, you can make a right in. So it's going to eliminate, I think, a lot of the traffic coming in off of East Ridge Road.
Is there any installation of any signage to just make folks aware that there are pedestrian traffic or possibly pedestrian traffic? It's really a lot of visual stuff going on right there that people could get distracted easily and not pay attention as they're getting out. They're looking at traffic and not at pedestrians.
We could, we could easily add like a sidewalk. I'm not really, for something like that, I'm trying to think, I mean, like do a pedestrian...
Like yield to pedestrians?
Yeah, we could, yeah.
Any sign like that.
We could absolutely add something like that.
I don't know necessarily that putting up a sign helps, but I think that it just reinforces the idea that there could actually be somebody...
Yeah, we could absolutely, coming out of the, coming out of the car wash here at this location right there, we could easily put a yield to pedestrian. Standard would be a seven-foot-high sign, typically what you see also along a main street. Absolutely, that's not a, not a problem at all.
The, when I'm coming down east on East Ridge Road and want to go to the detailing shop, can I pull into there without getting my car washed, or if I do decide to get my car washed but want the interior done, then what do I do after that?
You can do either. So if you were coming in off of East Ridge Road and wanted to get your car washed, you come through the site this way, loop around, and enter the car wash. Then if you're going to be doing the interior after and you're done with the car wash, you would come back down the same way, and then you would come into the interior shop right here. So there is a separate, dedicated drive lane that comes down from this site into the main parking area for here, that you're allowed to go to the oil change, the interior shop, gas, without having to go through the car wash.
Or go around the block.
Or, yes. So you just, basically just come right down south, head east, and you're right into the main parking field and the building and the entrance to the oil change, and the interior shop is right there.
And what do I do if I just want to vacuum my car? How am I getting in and out? And am I crossing any traffic?
If you wanted to vacuum your car, you could enter in off of East Ridge Road here and use the vacuums there. And if you wanted to, you would have the ability to exit on East Ridge Road there. Or if you wanted to get gas after, you could continue on down here, go to the gas, and then exit on the Hudson. It would be all dependent on which direction.
So there's still going to be some cross traffic there that we currently see with the gas station?
There could, there could be a little bit of cross traffic with people doing vacuums. We find a lot of people who do the vacuums are already coming out of the car wash, so they're already in that area, and then it's not a high level of traffic, because typically people are there between, honestly, between 15, 20, 25 minutes. So you're not going to get a steady stream of 50, 100, 150 cars every hour coming from there, because once they get filled, someone's going to be there 15, 20 minutes, they clean out their cars, then they vacuum it, and they just, we're not timing them, and it's free, so you're not feeding in quarters and trying to speed it up as quickly as possible.
So you guys have no concern of cross traffic?
No, we don't have any. It's going to be a lot better than what is there today, so anything we have to improve the situation will definitely help, and it's going to be very minimal amount of cross traffic that's there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, my first, first thing, I think, is just a clarification or just, just something maybe to say on the record. There is no work being done curb cut or in the right-of-way on Ridge Road, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was correct and on the record. And then my other question is really in regards, I'm assuming you got the county's comments?
Yes.
The DEC's comments about stormwater permits, speedies, et cetera. Can you just talk a little bit about how that's going to be addressed?
We have submitted a full SWIP report as part of the application.
As one project?
As one overall project. We're not allowed to segment the project to try to do that, so I'm going to have to talk to the Arundacoit Town Engineer as well and the city Rochester, just to see if I do two separate NOIs that each one signs off on as the MS for, or one of them takes the lead. But we're analyzing it as one overall project. Everything will meet the DEC standards in regards to water quality and water quantity for the overall project.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Mr. Evelyn?
I have no questions, actually. Thank you. Had to think about that. Don't want to miss my chance.
Never do.
With that, we'll open up the public hearing as soon as he leaves the podium. Anyone who would like, you can have a seat. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on anything regarding this project? Please come up, state your name and address, and please address your questions to the board.
My name's Ken Roush. I live at 4645 St. Paul Boulevard. I have questions about the traffic on Hudson Avenue. If, just getting in and out, and, you know, if the cars line up on the southbound side to make a right turn into the property, and people are trying to get out and make a left turn on Hudson there, I'm just curious if that's going to be a backup of any sort. And the other question is, you know, was there any consideration to adding a traffic light? I know there's one by the Walmart entrance, just a little bit south farther, but I'm just curious about whether that rotation of traffic might cause a backup of some sort, either on their property or waiting to get in or out. So that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Would the applicant like to address any of the comments that were made by the public?
Thank you. Matthew Oats with Delta Sonic. In regards to the traffic signal, a traffic signal wouldn't be allowed by the DOT just due to the spacing. They have minimum spacing requirements that they look for, typically between 800 and 1,000 feet. With the signal at East Ridge and Hudson and the signal at Walmart and Hudson, there is just, there's no way the DOT would ever allow us to get another traffic signal. We did do a full traffic study for the site, was done by T-Y-Lin International. That has been submitted to the town, was also submitted to the city, and it has been forwarded to the Monroe County Department of Transportation as well. And as part of the county comments, they acknowledge that they're going to be sending out separate comments on that. So the traffic on Hudson is going to be fully vetted by the county DOT before they allow us to install the curb cuts. In regards to any traffic that would back up on Hudson, the way the site is laid out, I left my pointer over there, but all the stacking in the site is probably about four times the amount that there is today. And even on our best day, we haven't seen a site that would actually back up all the way onto Hudson. It would be unprecedented, so we don't see there being any ability, anything happening on our site that would hinder cars coming in off of Hudson Avenue.
Excuse me, Chairman, just as a point of clarification, also the Hudson portion, or the Hudson portion of the site is located in the city of Rochester. So that'll be something that they would be looking at as part of their site plan review in addition to their, their completion of SEAKER, so that it will be addressed, but by the city of Rochester and Monroe County DOT.
Thank you. Clarification. Anything else that would like to say?
Nope, I believe that covered all the comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So in regards to SEAKER, do you want to review anything on if there is one mistake that we have to correct?
The, the error is in, from the part one that was submitted by the applicant. So we've made note of the required changes. We'll ask the applicant to submit a revised part one form, but the, those are minor details in terms of the incorrect references that really don't impact the evaluation of environmental impacts associated with the project. So if you want to take a look at the, the draft information that staff prepared for the part two and part three for this project, I think you should be all set. If the, if the change to part one was substantive, then we'd be going in a different direction, but it's very minor detail.
So part two was part of our handouts from tonight, so everybody had it. And unless there's any more discussion, would anybody like to make a motion regarding SEAKER?
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make a declaration on PB-1702-1 regarding SEAKER, that it be listed as an unlisted action.
Is there anyone who would second that?
Second.
Excuse me, Mr. Richards, did you make the reference to the negative declaration, and we just missed it?
A negative declaration, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
No, I appreciate you. Unlisted negative declaration.
With that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Nobody abstains and nobody absent. It passes, seven to zero. Thank you for investing in Arundacoit. Still have to take up the site plan resolution? For preliminary and final site plan review? In regards to case PB-1... Sorry, sir, we weren't done yet.
1702-1, upon the matter of request by Delta Sonic Car Wash Systems Incorporated for preliminary and site, final site plan approval to modify development of the existing Delta Sonic Car Wash site on premises 611 East Ridge Road in a C business district that includes expansion of the facility onto an adjacent parcel located wholly in the city of Rochester on premises, premises 1565 Hudson Avenue. I, I move it as approved.
Can I just amend that, that we require the signage for the pedestrian exiting?
I think that's the county, the county takes care of the roads with that.
On private property, they wouldn't. This, I'm talking about putting on their property as they're exiting.
On an exit, yeah.
Could we, could we be specific about what you'd like it to say? I mean...
Pedestrian crossing.
Yield to pedestrians.
Yield to pedestrians is great by me.
Will it be facing the property or facing...
It would be facing the exiting traffic.
Okay.
Just, there are quite a few curb cuts.
Oh, there are.
Right there, I just...
Could the, could the obverse of the sign indicate that it's Delta Sonic? Because otherwise you just have a...
I don't know what the town requirement would be on that signage.
Oh, okay, I didn't think about signage there. All right. Otherwise, it's just blank.
Isn't this going to be in the area of the Hudson Avenue? That he wants a signage which is going to be sitting...
No, it's on Ridge Road, exactly what I asked the applicant about.
After all this time, we're putting signs up?
Well, it's our opportunity to make that change if this is the time we want to do it.
If the, if the proposed location is in the right-of-way, then that's actually, that would actually be something that we have to take up with Monroe County DOT as well, because now there'd be something happening in the right-of-way that wasn't anticipated before. If it's on their property...
That's what I'm talking about.
If it's on their property...
The proposal is to have it in, inside the right-of-way.
Okay, so then, then it becomes just a part of their, the building permit. So it'll be an additional, there'll be a potential for an...
The applicant agreed that they would be happy to do that, but I just wanted to make sure that it reflected that they did agree to do that.
So I'll repeat what I heard. The condition is require signage regarding yield to pedestrian crossing that would be facing the exiting traffic on the Delta Sonic property.
Correct.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have a few proposed conditions if the board might consider those. The first was that the applicant submits a stormwater pollution prevention plan to the town and that it's reviewed and approved by the town engineer.
I thought I seen that.
The next is that the applicant addresses any comments raised by the Monroe County Department of Transportation and submits confirmation to the town regarding same. And then the last is that the project plans be revised to address the town engineer's comments. I think there was one question about the location of a sewer lateral. That's all I have.
Okay, does anybody need me to repeat those? Are we all, we're good? Okay, so we had a motion by Evelyn. Are you okay with all the conditions?
Yes.
Can we have a second?
Second.
With that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Nobody's absent and nobody abstains, and thank you for investing in Arundacoit.
Okay, next item on the addenda is case number PB-1702-2, upon the matter of request by Costage Engineering, acting its agent for St. Cattery Tikawatha Roman Catholic Church for subdivision approval to subdivide 6.37 acre church property to create a 0.951 acre parcel containing the existing three school, three-story school building on premises 4350 St. Paul Boulevard in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dan Brock from Costage Engineering, located at 217 Lake Avenue in Rochester. I'm here tonight requesting approval to subdivide .951 acres of land containing the existing school building at 41 Colebrook Drive from the overall church parcel of 6.367 acres. The purpose of this proposed subdivision is to help facilitate in any potential sale of the existing school building. We are, I'd like to note, we are scheduled to appear in front of the town of Arundacoit Zoning Board for, in two weeks' time, for all required area variances in, for this subdivision. The subdivision, we're limited with the building that we have and the property lines that we are proposing. The north line is our right-of-way. The east line is an existing property line. Two of the lines, the side setback, we're posing to the zoning board, requesting a zero, a zero side setback where 15 is required. We're basically, we'd like to put the property line along the western face of the proposed school building, westerly face of the proposed building. The southern line is a 15-foot offset of the southernmost building line, and we're requesting 15 foot where 30 is required. As far as parking goes, we are requesting from the zoning board a variance to allow parking off of our parcel, and that would be accommodated by a reciprocal ingress egress and utility easement between the church and any future purchaser of that property. We understand that... We understand that, oh, I apologize, I got ahead of myself. Father Paul English is here representing the church, sorry, and Chip Russell from Harris Beach, he can answer any questions as far as reciprocal easement goes. We do have copies in a draft form of the reciprocal ingress egress, but not knowing past this point of the subdivision, the easement would need to be reviewed by the town and also, I believe, approved by the town board. We think that the, by utilizing the church's parking lot and the shared entrance on the easterly portion of the church or of the school property, we'd be keeping in accordance with Chapter 5 of Town of Rondacote's Comprehensive Master Plan in regards to encouraging shared parking and shared entrances where available. I might add that, at this point, we're just proposing the subdivision. There's no physical changes to the property or to the building we're proposing. We're simply subdividing the property to facilitate a future sale of the existing school building as it is. Any, any changes, the purchaser would need to come in front of the board again, or for the first time, actually, to present a site plan approval as to what his or their interest may be for the building. We're simply here to do step one of what would be required for any sale of a, of a building and put it on its own parcel through subdivision. Again, it's, we are not proposing any physical changes to the building or the, the site itself. At that point, if, I'd like to take any questions, comments, concerns of the board.
Sure. Mr. Evelyn?
You come back to me.
Sure. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, one of my main questions, and I saw our fire marshals hiding back there. One of my main questions is, what is going to be done or how are we going to put a requirement or a contingency on this if we approve it with regards to the portion of the building that is going to be on the lot line? So, we're essentially creating a party wall by having a, a building and then two separate tenancies potentially within the building line. So, how can we ensure that, moving forward, even if it is a similar use that is approved, that now that it's two different properties, we actually have, from a building code standpoint, coverage?
May I chime in? The New York State Building Code has provisions for, and I'm sure Greg Merrick, our fire marshal, will nod to me if, or shake his head the opposite way if I'm incorrect, has provisions in it for zero, zero setback or zero separation from the building edge to the lot line. And there are other instances where a parcel line will split a building, a physical structure. As long as the construction at that point of, of separation meets certain standards for fire separation, there isn't an issue from a buildings, New York State Building Code perspective. I'm getting correct from the fire marshal, just for the folks at home who can't hear him. So, there, it's just a matter of, a method of construction.
Right, and that's a-
Depending on its use and its construction, it may require a fire sprinkler throughout the building, depending on what use it's done.
Greg, yeah, if you want to join us at the table, you can, but I think there's a, there are remedies if, and perhaps Rob Brenner can-
Yeah, and the other thing I was going to ask, just to follow up on it, is there, is that, what type of, is that just a connector, like an open-air connector, or is that an enclosed structure?
I believe that portion is just a covered walkway-
Okay.
That leads from the, thank you. I believe if, I believe that the portion I think we're referring to is just a covered walkway connecting the two buildings. If there were any changes being proposed as far as the fire code goes, that would be presented by the purchaser at the time of any other, if, what they're doing with the building itself, so.
So, to follow up on your question, I mean, at this stage, the applicant's in for subdivision approval and there's, there's no plan, they're just looking to sell an asset that belongs to the church. So, with that being said, I think if the board were to entertain approval of this application, to deal with that issue, it may be appropriate just to condition, you know, any future change in use or occupancy is compliant with the New York State Building and Fire Code.
Okay. Tell ahead.
Mr. Richards?
If we were to approve this subdivision, is it contingent or can we make it contingent upon the zoning board approving?
It would, yeah, so if the planning board were to act on this application, it would have to be contingent on the applicant receiving the necessary area variances from the zoning board of appeals. That would finalize the application, that would allow the chairman to sign the subdivision map if it were approved and then be recorded. It couldn't be recorded before then because we'd be creating a, a lot that wouldn't be compliant with some of the setback requirements, as the applicant's engineer indicated.
Okay, thank you. And you guys, you truly have no plans currently for this, there's no prospective developer that's looking at this or anything like that?
At this time, it's just, at this time, it's just subdivision approval. That's all we're here tonight to provide. I couldn't speak to any future site plan.
That's it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And to address your concern, Alan, to the extent that there is a project in the future, this board would likely have to see the site plan for the change in use, so there would be site plan review, there may be, you know, variances required or something like that from the zoning board. So, if there is a project, it's, it's likely to come before you again after the subdivision and after the church is able to sell the property.
Thank you.
Mr. Plamano?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. Solonbeck?
I'm good.
Mr. Huber? And I'm good, too. Is there anything else anybody would like to address to the board?
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more, one more thing I'd like to just mention. We did receive a memo from a, a local resident which may or may not have some potential property maintenance code related comments in it. It just might be something we want to refer to the building department.
Have you seen the memo?
Yes, yes, I've-
We can follow up with that from a code compliance standpoint.
Thank you. Do you have any comments?
None, not at this time.
Thank you. And Michael, does anything, did they ask it this time?
I don't know what this is, I'm going to look to Carrie to, to shoot me a glare if I'm asking a question that's outstepping my bounds here. After it's subdivided, will both parcels have direct access to sanitary facilities and drinking water?
We, I have shown a, oh, sorry. We've looked at record maps, we do know that there is a domestic service inch line going to the building, it's isolated. I believe from the record maps, we have found a sanitary lateral, but I haven't confirmed, but it is part of, New York State Health would require us to have that also, so. And once I get that, that will be part of the final plans, once it's shown, once we figure out where it is.
And, and the one-story, the one-story brick church that will remain out of this subdivision will also have both of those.
The-
Right, the actual church itself?
Oh, yes, yes, I understand it, sorry. Yep, they'll all have their own independent services.
And Mike, just to follow up on that, as part of the recording process for the subdivision map, the county will also do a review of, of water and sewer facilities, and they'll sign off on the subdivision map if it were to be approved. And that's a prerequisite to be able to record it at the county clerk's office.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? With that, I'd like you to open it up to the public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak regarding this application, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Please come up, sir.
Good evening, my name is Richard Marion, I live at 4430 St. Paul Boulevard. I own three acres of property that runs from St. Paul Boulevard down to Washington Avenue, the first house directly north of Pine Crest Drive. I would think it was several months ago that, well, I'd like to start out by saying I'm a little bit perplexed why something of this magnitude, okay, there couldn't have been a little bit better communication from the engineering firm, in the sense that one day I came home from running an errand at the town hall, and I saw some guy running around in my yard, which I don't have a problem, it's three acres and there's people on it all of the time, so I don't have a problem with that. And he had his surveying telescope or whatever it's called and everything else, and, and it was only at that time that I found out that there was anything, any potential that the church was going to be making a move. I would think that in the future, the engineering firm might want to consider on something of this magnitude that they get the word out earlier than they do, well, actually, they didn't get it out at all. That's number one. Number two, I understand that, and I've lived in the town of Rondacote for nearly 40 years, I'm one of these type of people, I pay my taxes and I keep my mouth shut. And I try to fly below the radar screen. But I'm a little bit confused why it seems to be that we're fast-tracking this, and maybe we're not, maybe this is the way the government in West Run, or in Rondacote works. I understand that there's a planning board meeting tonight that we're all attending, and then there's the zoning board that will be coming up in, I guess, a couple of weeks. I could be wrong, but I believe that this school has been up for sale for quite some time. So, I'm just trying to get a handle on why, all of a sudden, things have to be done in such rapid succession. Now, in the past, probably close to 30 years ago, there was, the, the school at the time, St. Thomas U. Pass, five minutes? How much time do I have left?
Two minutes.
Okay, I'll try to get it in, thank you. The school approached me and several of my neighbors about selling property because they wanted to, they wanted to build a high-rise, I guess, parish house or something like that where people who had been in part of the parish for years were, were going to, they wanted to build someplace where they could stay in the community. So, I guess, one question I would have, and I don't know who to ask this question, too, is when it goes before the zoning board, is it possible that they can rezone this in such a way that it's no longer, and I believe it's called R1, it's no longer R1? It would be something that could accommodate, you know, high tower or something like that, high-rise for whatever, whether it's parishioners or just community members or whatnot, which may not necessarily be the bad, worst thing in the world. But the other thing I would ask you to take into consideration, again, nearly 30 years ago, they put a, a group home across the street, directly across the street from the church, and as far as I'm concerned, they've been the best neighbors in the world. Very quiet, well-kept property and whatnot. I would just like to go on the record as saying that if there's contemplation about putting a high-rise tower along with a group home, that seems to be rather high concentration for, for that particular part of West Rondacote. So, thank you very much for listening to what my concerns are.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address the board?
Hi, Mary Jo Mauer, I live at 169 Washington Avenue, which is four houses down from the property that's under consideration. And part of the thing that concerns me is what, subdividing the property to be used is what? Because on the North Nagle website, it says that there is a sale pending on that property. So, I'm a little concerned that it's a little disingenuous to say that there's no proposed purpose for that property. And, you know, and I don't know how you give a green light to start a process when you may be opposed to the process down the line. I, I have a real concern about what that property is going to be used for, how it's going to impact the character of the neighborhood, traffic, and what's going in there. You know, it's a residential neighborhood, and I think we deserve the answers before any decision is made. So, thank you.
Thank you.
To follow up with my wife's comments, all we-
Sir?
I'm John Mauer, and I live at 169 Washington Avenue. I grew up in the neighborhood on Glenmont Drive, we've lived in our house for 30 years. I'm not as articulate as my wife, but I liken this whole thing to like my, I have teenage sons, and they come to me on Saturday night and say, hey, Dad, I need the car keys, I got to go out. Well, my first question is, where are you going? What's the plan, son? Oh, don't worry, Dad, just give me the keys, I, you know, I, I'll be home, I won't be late. You know, what's the plan? That's my question tonight. You know, you're asking for the car keys here, they're asking to subdivide that property and telling us neighbors, you know, nothing of what, what the plan is. And there's obviously a plan. That, that property's been for sale for, for over a year, and now as that other gentleman mentioned, the other neighbor, all of a sudden now they're, they want to move. Obviously, there's a plan in place. It's a residential neighborhood, and like I say, I grew up in the neighborhood, there's, there's, there's schools across the street from it, Colebrook and Arcoy School, there's a lot of kids, there's a lot of traffic in the morning and afternoon, both pedestrian traffic, the children walk into school, there's no school buses, generally speaking, there. You know, it's, it's a quiet R1 neighborhood, it always has been, and the, the subdivision, obviously, you know, there's a, what's going to go in there is going to impact that neighborhood, and we're very opposed to it. And I'll tell you, we'll be back. And I think, like you say, why green light something? Come to us with the plan, that's what we need to see, be upfront. St. Thomas, or St. Cattery Parish should come to the neighborhood, they should have a meeting, talk to us about what, what is the plan, and be upfront with the neighborhoods, you know, the neighborhood, because the residents there, obviously, we're all aware that they're trying to, you know, put something through here behind our backs. It's obvious. Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to address, and please try to hold reactions. Thank you.
My name is Fred Curran, C-R-R-A-N, 195 Washington Avenue. Property is adjacent to the driveway that drives, goes straight through from St. Paul to Washington Avenue. There's already traffic, they're going through that parking lot on a daily basis, cutting, making a shortcut to get to St. Paul Boulevard and vice versa. Same as the Mauers, I look at kind of putting the horse or the carriage ahead of the horse. There has to be a plan, I assume, with something having been up for sale for as long as it has. No one's come to make any kind of adjustments in anticipation of something being done, and now we're, we're coming up and saying we want to parcel this off. You just don't come up and say you want to parcel something off after it's been sitting there for a year. So, I, again, I agree with them, something is either in the bushes, and it's time to bring it out before a decision is made. You're walking, they're coming up here and asking you to put blind folders on and asking us to put blind folders on also, and not know what's going to happen in our neighborhood. That's my back door. And if, if they can split the church and the school, are they going to split the rectory, which is right next door to my house, at some real short time? Because it doesn't make sense to have one square parcel for, I don't know, maybe they're going to have a, a park out there and, and, you know, make it nice and beautiful. Or maybe they're going to put high-rises in there. I have no idea, is it zoned for high-rises? Is it zoned for apartment houses in that area? Just putting an approval on something that you don't know what it's going to be. Just putting an approval on something that you don't know what it's gonna be anymore than we do, and it's, you know, all of a sudden, this has popped up and we belong in that neighborhood. We deserve the courtesy of knowing what they're going, what their plan is to go ahead. They have salespeople, the whole nine yards, to sell it. They have the people prepared to come in here and ask for a variance. A variance for what? What do you need a variance for? If you don't have a seller, if you don't have a buyer. I mean, there's a mystery behind this, as far as I'm concerned, the Mauers are concerned, and I'm sure a lot of other people here are concerned, but maybe a little nervous to get up and say something. That's, that's my point of view. If you want to do something, come upfront. That's the way I taught my children. You want to go someplace, you want to do something, you have a question, ask it. I'll give you an answer, it may not be the answer you like, but give me an answer. And that's what I do with my children, that's the way I brought them up, and they have, fortunately, to the best of my knowledge, never got into any trouble. I'm sure there's something that happened along the line, but anyway, it didn't split the house apart. And that's essentially what we're, they're asking us to do, to split the house apart. I think someplace in the Bible, there's something said about cutting something in part, and I don't think this is what we're, we're doing at this time, or should be doing at this particular stage. They closed the church once it opened up. Now, what are we trying to do at this particular point? My question, I don't know. I live there, I've been there for fifty years. Fifty years I've been there. And I have enough traffic going up and down through the driveway right now, and as they pointed out, Colebrook, you have one cross, crossing guard at Colebrook in the morning and the afternoon. There's traffic coming four ways, and that traffic guard goes from corner to corner to corner to corner, bringing kids from, from all four corners that come down Colebrook, that come up Colebrook, that come down Washington Avenue. I don't know how, how the traffic guard keeps up with all of it.
Stop sign.
They earn their money. Now, we're gonna put something else in there that's gonna put additional traffic? I don't think, I don't think it's reasonable to ask us to approve something that we don't know what we're approving it for. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board?
Good evening, my name is Joe Palladino, I live at 34 Colebrook Drive, directly across the street from the church. And I have to second my neighbors, and I'm gonna put it point-blank that I don't believe for one second that we're being told the truth about this deal. We don't know if there's gonna be low-income housing there, which only brings more crime to a neighborhood, and I'm against it completely. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address the board? One at a time, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Chase Taylor with my wife Sharon Taylor. We live at 220 Washington Avenue. We're the colonial right behind the, the old rectory. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, just wanted to listen, but I just retired last July, and I used to drive a city bus for thirty-seven years. And I always had the St. Paul route to Somerville. And over the years, I've noticed a lot of children. I used to leave for work around four o'clock in the morning, and get home about six or seven at night. But since I've been retired, I've noticed a lot of mothers and fathers picking their children up, not near the school, but on Washington Avenue, and one particular two-vehicles parked right at that entrance Fred Curran spoke about. And it got, it's so bad between the garbage trucks and the mail, mail people delivering the mail. I had to go up to these people and say, "Just park in my driveway, so it's safer for the children, so they don't have to go over to snowbanks during the winter." And, and this, and I've been noticing in, in, in the fall, and I'm very concerned about the children. I don't know what the master plan is that's coming down, but like other speakers have mentioned, it's very imperative that at least give the residents in that area some feedback. That's all you ask. And, and I, I've told these parents, if, even if you gotta park on the grass, because sometimes the people park on each side of the street, and it's very difficult to get through, and I don't want any children killed in that area, injured. And if you have children, you have grandchildren, you gotta believe me, this is not safe. And that crossing guard up at St. Paul and Colebrook, it's an older man, his reflexes are probably, if something should happen with one of these children, or some, a child walking their dog, and that dog gets loose, this, this man is not able to, because he's only directing, he's watching out for the children. And if you add, put more people in that corner area, you're gonna have trouble eventually down the road. And I don't think anybody here wants that responsibility for the ultimate dollar, to sell the school, or the property, whatever. I mean, it's, it's ludicrous. Common sense goes a long way. And, and if you're, I'm grandfather of four little children. They're the most important thing in my life. I worked thirty-seven years in New York State, did my share, and it's very imperative that you're important people, you represent us, and you gotta, you gotta come up with every possible question you can. And he has Harris Beach as, as legal advice. All he wants to do is just get this sold, because he's in the business to make money. But I'm only saying, look out for the children, look out for the older people that walk. And if you add all this traffic and get all these garbage trucks, and the fire trucks coming, you, you got chaos. Then you throw in the severe winters that we've had, we haven't had it this year, but in past years, and I, I see it all. When I was driving a city bus, all five counties I drove, I was four in seniority when I retired, regional transit. I drove the sixty-foot buses, sixty-two-foot buses with a hundred and fifty people. I had to carry more insurance in case, in case I got in a bad wreck, they wouldn't sue me and take everything I had. I'm just saying this, think before you make decisions, because you, you got the children, you got the senior citizens, is that all worth it, just to pass a property? That's all I gotta say, thank you.
Thank you.
Very well said.
Anybody else like to address the board?
Good evening, I am Kim DiPerdetto, I live at 4559 St. Paul Boulevard, which is at the corner of Fendera and St. Paul, next to the private drive there. I too, over the years, have witnessed what he's saying about the bus route, the busyness in Arundicoid. I walked every day in the village, right there in Arundicoid, with my dog, I have grandchildren who come to visit, and I just feel that, at this point in my life, that piece of property that we have, or any of the taxpayers here, a high-rise goes in there, apartments go in there, depending on what they are, what's gonna happen to our homes? Right now, we're, our taxes are up, and the, our homes are going down in value, so it kinda really upsets me to think about what could potentially be happening over there. And I too agree, why would we have blueprints up there already, and a lawyer standing here telling us that it's not been secured or whatnot, and yet we're, we're getting flyers in the mail from all our neighbors? So, the word's out there somewhere that something, something's happening. And I'm telling you, as a homeowner, I have a lot of issues about it. We're just losing everything. It's like we don't even have a say in anything. That, to me, would be a big issue, to see those go into apartments there, that piece of property. It is kinda small. I don't see where you'd be putting the parking. I walk my dog, and he runs in through there, and it, it just doesn't seem like you would have enough property to put everything. With the driveways and the busyness that goes on over there, I too agree, that's gonna be, come down there in the summer, watch everybody speeding on St. Paul, and then you add that to the mix coming around the corners and that. I just think that that's asking for a lot of issues in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I just, could I make one comment? There seems to, to be some confusion about the approval that's being applied for tonight and some of the procedural background that led us to tonight's hearing, so it may be worth just getting a quick update from staff, I don't know, Carrie or Lauren, if you want to give an update as far as what the application process was, when they applied, what they're seeking, and where we are in the process.
I can address that if that's okay. So the, the application is for subdivision of land, it's essentially creating lot lines around an existing building. Right now, the three buildings are located on one contiguous, one single parcel. Our understanding was that the application was being sought so that sale of the property could proceed in the future, because that's, actually, you couldn't sell the building as it currently sits, because it's connected to other buildings on a single parcel. So this was, the application for this, for tonight's application would have been due at the end of January. So it's not, I want to make sure that there's no, there's no rush, it's, there's a month-long process, you have to make application a month before a, a meeting where you are subject to a public hearing. The zoning variances that have been applied for simultaneously, and I say simultaneously, the following week, the application would have been due to be heard for next month, or the, the March meeting for zoning, those variants are only associated with the lot lines for the subdivision, so that if the subdivision were to be approved, that it would be a legally conforming lot. We've seen examples of this on Ridge Road, when a lot is, an out parcel is created, they have to get the accompanying zoning relief, if there's any setback issues for existing buildings when new out parcels are created. So it's just, the zoning variances are only related to the lot lines to make sure that a newly-created lot conforms with the code, and that's the relief that they would be granted, or need to, to have granted in order for it to be illegally, illegal, a legally-existing lot in the town. But I just want to make, and also that there is no, at this time, there's no development, the building is still vacant, the zoning is R1, there's been no proposed change to those things, and certainly, it would, there'd be future applications to this board and potentially other boards, depending on the nature of a project that might be advanced if a sale were to go through. And I just, I want to just maybe provide that update so that everybody understands, we're all on the same page with respect to what's before us today.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, and, and just to, to piggyback on what Carrie said, there were some comments about the use of the property or what could be built there. The variances that are before the ZBA only relate to dimensional requirements in the code with respect to the location of the physical structure currently vis-à-vis lot lines and other parking regulations. There's no variance before the zoning board to allow density of, of housing units or anything like that, I know there's some comments raised about that. They only relate to the physical location of that property with respect to the lot lines that have been drawn around it.
That, the public hearing's still open? Anybody else still like to address?
I'm Virginia Mauer, M-A-U-R-E, and I live at 203 Pinecrest Drive. Pinecrest is the first street south of the church property. So I understand that this is just procedural, that you're just grant, cutting up a piece of property. My concern as a neighbor, though, is you are talking about shared parking, so if you're going to subdivide this property with the contingency that has shared parking, then you're talking about doing something with that property. And I would think that you would have the plan before you subdivide it. If you subdivide without the plan, that I agree with Fred Curran, you're putting the cart before the horse. And as, we have a lovely neighborhood. The Maywood subdivision is a lovely R1 neighborhood with people who walk. And so I would request that this committee take the time to say, prior to making the decision to subdivide the property, to ask for the plan. And I believe there, the property has a sale pending sign, so I also believe that what was presented to this committee was not accurate.
Thank you. Ms. Mauer, Ms. Mauer?
Yes.
I know you already addressed the, I just wanted to make sure we give everybody a chance to address.
On the card.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Barry Sullivan, 22 Edgewater Lane, and I've been a citizen of West Arundicoid for sixty years. I'd echo the safety issue, as you all know, Colebrook School was just expanded for the need for educating our, our beautiful young children. It's population growth in the area, there's no question about it, and it's young population growth that may not know all the safety rules, and that may not make those mature decisions when to walk, when to stop, when to run, when to wait. But aside from that, I, I took a look at some of the paperwork, and on the short environmental assessment form, which is part one, I don't know if I'm allowed to comment on that tonight, but I just, I just saw some things that raise a lot of flares. On question number eight A, it says, the question is, "Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels?" It was marked "No." I thought it should be "Yes." Question number nine, "Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements?" And it said, they checked "Yes." And then it says, "Well, if the proposed action will exceed requirements, describe design features and technologies." Nothing was described. Fundamental questions and answers. Number ten, "Will the proposed action connect to an existing public or private water supply?" "No." Well, if something's gonna be done with a building, why would you check "No," unless nobody needs water in the building perhaps? Number eleven, "Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities?" "No." Wastewater treatment, it was marked "N.A."
Excuse, I believe that this is when it's a new connection, and I, Rob, unless it's a, could be a clerical action.
And the other thing I was gonna say is, the AF was completed with respect to the subdivision alone, and since there's no project that's currently contemplated or anticipated, some of these environmental impacts with the association of drawing a parcel around an existing building wouldn't be applicable.
Right, so I just, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, I just want to
Yeah.
Provide the feedback, I apologize for interrupting.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the guidance. I don't have that sort of degree or background, so these are
So a lot of times, it's, if, it's not necessarily if something is gonna happen, it's whether or not there's an impact associated with the action, in this case, the action is the subdivision of land.
Okay.
If, for example, something was being proposed to be developed, say a new building was going in, or there was gonna be a repurposing or rehabilitation of an existing building, then you would answer those questions quite differently. But because it's a matter of subdividing land, some of those aren't, they don't pertain to this particular action, and that's what seeker, and to be honest with you, sometimes the seeker form is a little bit limiting in that, the way you have to answer questions.
So the question about increasing traffic, marking it "No."
Right, because right now, there's, the building is vacant, this action is going to, is not going to change, there's no, so if, if, for example, there was gonna be a change, and something was being proposed to occupy, then that new occupant would need to come for site plan review.
Thank you.
Much different application.
Okay. Let me just finish on the paperwork and then make a concluding remark. There's, there's also a piece of paperwork, it's called the Town of Arundicoid Application to Planning Board, and the paperwork was received and timestamped by you on January 27th. And Father Paul, Reverend Paul English, the pastor, his name was typed, he never signed it. it. So, if there's an application to the planning board and it was timestamped January 27th, and Father English was listed as the applicant, why wouldn't he have signed it?
He was, the agent is, in this instance, is hostage engineering.
Right.
So, they can submit the application on behalf of an applicant, and so we only need one signature.
That wasn't indicated on the form, and I just, I just thought it was something that...
Yeah, so procedurally, so if, in any case, if you look at, as I knock my cup over, I use my hands, I apologize, half my Italian is showing. If an applicant has an agent that's making application on their behalf, we only require one signature. So, in the case where...
Didn't say "or."
Yeah, I just, procedurally, we provide, we provide both signature lines, but we don't require it from the town in order to be a complete application.
It's interesting, because if it's property that's owned by the Diocese of Rochester, and there's a pastor for that property, you would think that the pastor, if there's some plan, would sign it. I understand your remarks, and they're well taken. My last comment is, when we were all little, one of the first games we learned was Connect the Dots. We got pretty good at it. This gentleman that was the retired bus driver probably had his grandchildren play Connect the Dots. Now, we're playing an adult version of Connect the Dots. And in that game, you can kind of see where things are going ahead of time. Do I have a little bit of time because of the clarifications?
Yeah, I'm just giving her the same.
Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot. So, there's a game of connecting the dots going on here, an adult version. And I think most of the people in this audience have above-average intelligence to be connecting the dots. And I'm just astonished. I understand the procedures and the way that this can be kind of nudged forward without really telling you what's going on. But I think we all know the game of Connect the Dots, and it's a little bit disturbing the way that this is being moved forward in the manner that it is. And my last concluding remark is the safety issue. I can't underscore that enough. The safety of that neighborhood, an R1 neighborhood, beautiful jewel of West Aronacoid, to potentially be disrupted by something, I'm sure you will all carefully evaluate, I just believe cannot be overemphasized. So, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address the board? Ms. Mauer, I think you wanted, did you have another question?
I'm Ken Roush. I asked about the Delta Sonic.
As long as it's the, oh, he didn't speak. Sorry, go ahead.
This is my first time on St. Thomas.
I apologize.
Okay. Thank you. Ken Roush, 4645 St. Paul.
Could you repeat your name again?
Ken Roush, R-O-U-S-H. Barry was asking a few procedural questions, because I know, you know, we want to follow all the code, town code, and laws of the state. I just had a little bit of a couple of questions about the connection between the church and the school, which crosses the proposed property line. It's an enclosed walkway. It's secured, locked doors and all. I can't remember if it's heated or not. I think part of it is heated. The question is, is there a firewall, does it need a firewall between the church and the school to meet code? And I'm just curious if that was part of the, what was reviewed there, just to make sure it meets all of the requirements. Because I know the fire marshal signed off on this project. And the one last question was, it's alluded to that there's a zoning meeting coming up, and I just wanted to know the specific date.
March 6. March 6.
So, that's one week from today.
Yes.
Somebody said a couple of weeks, so I wanted...
Yeah, Monday, March 6, 7:00 PM, same room.
Okay. Because somebody said a couple of weeks, and I thought March 6 was just one week away. So, I didn't want anybody to miss the meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. You're welcome to come back up, as long as it's a different point. Is it a different point than what you already brought up?
Yes, it is. I just, I understand that this is about the subdivision, and I understand that a lot of the comments that have been made tonight are more targeted towards the purpose of the building. But part of the problem is that there's been such a total lack of transparency of what is going to happen to that property, that it alarms the neighbors. You have to believe that if what was going to happen with that property was something that everybody would get on board for and say, "Oh, that's great," that they would disclose it right away. So, you know, right away, there's red flags that you go, "What's the, what is the plan?" Because it doesn't seem like it's something that we're going to be really excited about.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time?
No.
It's again, Ms. Mauer, as long as it's a new point.
John Mauer, 169 Washington Avenue. Just another point that I left out of my first, but, you know, you're carving out potentially a parcel, a property of that six acres, right in the heart, right in the middle of the piece of, the overall piece of property. My question is, you know, as a planning board, to consider the impact that that has on the remaining parcels. You're really dividing it in two, you know, and you'll have the church and the parish center on either ends of it. You know, if the parcel was on one end of the property, you know, you could see, you know, segmenting it off, but this is, this is right in the middle of the property. And you got to look at the long-term impact on the property, the overall property, once it's been divided like this. And I think it's something to consider. And as far as the shared parking goes, you know, there's potential, there, with shared parking, that parking lot is used on a weekly basis. You'll probably, more than likely, whatever goes in there require handicap parking spot, a significant number of park, handicap parking, which will use up a lot of the parking regardless of what other shared use it's for, you won't be able to park. So, it's, the shared parking, I think, is something also to really take a serious look at. You know, any parcel, you're going to divide it, it should have its own parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board at this time? With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Would the applicant like to respond?
Well, we've heard from a lot of people, very passionate about the neighborhood. And the gentleman talked about connecting the dots. Even when you connect the dots, you start with number one. And all we're here is to do number one, which is to do a subdivision. No matter, for the church to sell that building, it needs to be subdivided. The use will come by the purchaser at the time of the sale. Our goal here is not to try to throw the wool over anyone's eyes. It's simply step one is subdivision. That's what we're here tonight. Subdivision to be reviewed and hopefully approved by the planning board. Variances to be approved by the zoning board. Any site plan that's going to be submitted will be reviewed by the planning board and possibly the zoning board. Any easement, as far as the parking goes, will be reviewed by the town board. There's a lot of steps in standard procedure for getting the approvals for any project. At this time, we're concerned with step number one, which is the subdivision approval. The parking variances, we're not requesting a variance for a number of parkings based on a use. We're simply following town code and getting a parking variance to allow a shared parking per the, in accordance with the Town of Aronacoid's master plan. We, I can't emphasize enough that this is simply the first step to selling a property, to selling a building, you need to have it subdivided. Everyone that voiced their concern tonight will again be able to voice their concern when a purchaser is present and can answer their questions.
Hey, did you want to, please state your name and address.
Yes. Hi, Chip Russell from Harris Beach. My offices are at 99 Garnsey Road in Pittsford, New York. I appreciate everybody's comments tonight. To be clear, and I know that people were concerned, you know, we have a purchaser who is looking at this property. There is a purchase offer that's been made there in their due diligence period right now. We have no idea what their proposed use is at this juncture. That will obviously have to come before this board and others as they go to develop that property, if at all. You know, so at the end of the day, that's, it's still zoned R1 at this point in time. No use can be made of that building other than its current use without coming before, you know, the town board for a rezoning if they're going to change the R1. So, there's that process, and as Dan outlined before, you know, the variance process for them and their project, if they choose to move forward, which we, at this point in time, we have no idea whether they will choose to move forward. This is a difficult parcel to sell. It is on a campus, in a campus environment, as you suggest. The church uses the rectory for offices and meeting space, and will continue to do so after any sale of the property. But it's been on the market for two to three years now and has not had any offers. So, this is the first one that we've had. It's part of why we decided at this juncture to make the effort to re-subdivide the property out from the rest. This is a building that the church currently does not have a use for, and so, at this point in time, that's why we're starting this process. But nothing will change. Our application is still for essentially what amounts to a vacant building at this point in time. The parking for any sort of future use would be before the various town boards, and that, at that time, there would have to be arrangements made and variances granted if they were so inclined to grant those, to allow that project to move forward. As it stands right now, the church spends about $30,000 annually in carrying costs for this building. And as I said, it's been on the market for two to three years. It's really become a financial burden to the parish. It's, this property is not owned by the Diocese of Rochester, it's owned by the individual parish. And so, that's, that's one of the things that's been on the parish's mind, is to try to get this, what is now an asset or a resource that is certainly draining the coffers to having it be something that will be useful for the neighborhood, and that's something that obviously the ultimate purchaser is going to have to decide. The church has no plans for using this building right now. They have absolutely no plans to do so.
Thank you. Anything else? Is there any questions based on that information from the board?
Way in the back, somebody's got a hand.
The public hearing's closed, I'm sorry, at this time.
I can, may I ask a question?
So, go ahead. We'll come back to you.
I'm, I'm happy to hear that you have a, perhaps a buyer at least, you have a proposal from them. Like some of the citizenry, I'm concerned about the timeframe of, tonight is the, is tonight the first night that it became public that there was a sale pending, although someone did say that it's already been online? But if it's been, if it's been a bit of time, then it would have been nice if, yeah, there was some information out. But that being said, the timeframe is from now on. I'm done.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just, I would like to echo what Michael said. I mean, you heard what the neighbor said to you. If there's no transparency in a project, I don't know what's going to happen with the neighbors. It sounds like they're willing to support you, but they need to know what's going on. I understand directly the church doesn't have a hand in this, but they do through the sale.
Yeah, we certainly have, you know, some say in the process in terms of who we sell to, but, you know, at this juncture, we've entered into a purchase and sale contract with a party who has made, you know, not clear to us what they're planning to do with the property, other than inspecting the property, testing the property, measuring the property, things of that nature. So, at this, we're really, we're not at liberty by contract to disclose who that is.
Yeah, please address to the board. I do have one question for you. Was there, was there any, excuse me, please, please follow the rules, please, thank you. Did the purchaser have any say into this property division? Did they make a recommendation? Did they?
I believe, I believe that the property lines, is what you're referring to, is their location. The property lines are, again, like I said before, dictated somewhat by existing conditions. The only line that was really an offset on the southern line, which made 15 feet, we really just, it was just 15 feet, you know, we didn't want to go into the parking itself, tried to keep it in just a driving lane. But the other two lines are existing, the one is along the existing westerly face of the building.
Any other questions for the applicants at this time?
At this point, I'm going to request an adjournment.
Just a five-minute break. Five minutes, 10 minutes, please.
Can we have your attention, please? Please take your conversations out.
At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our town attorney, so he can make a few remarks.
So as the board considered the application and heard the testimony both from the applicant and from the public, the next thing we're charged with entertaining since the public hearing's closed is the subdivision approval and in connection with the subdivision approval, the state environmental quality review portion of that. And in that connection, based on some of the testimony that we heard, it sounds like one of the factors under the State Environmental Quality Review Act is you have to consider what's called segmentation or breaking up environmental review. And you can move forward with an action like the ones before us tonight when no future development is proposed or it's beyond mere speculation. And here, in hearing some of the testimony from the applicant, it sounds to us that there is a potential user for the building, they may have plans for the building. So the board, it's my recommendation to the board that the application be tabled to allow the developer an opportunity to have the application be amended, whether it's for site plan review in connection with a change of use or any other variances that might be required in connection with the use of the building. So the planning board, when it undertakes the State Environmental Quality Review Act process, has the full project in front of it that's currently being proposed to allow it to adequately evaluate the environmental impacts and make a determination of significance under SEAKER. So with that, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation would be that the board table the application to allow the applicant an opportunity to either work with the prospective purchaser or themselves to amend the application to give us some detail on what's being proposed.
Okay. Does the applicant have any issue with tabling the application? With that, all in favor of tabling this?
Could I ask a question? It's, can I ask a question after we make the motion to table?
You can make it, why don't you make a motion and then ask.
No, it's just a question about the map.
Yeah, he's right. What he's got to say.
In the, if you're looking at the, at the map with the seal underneath it, the four pieces of property that you first run into going north, all have the address of Colebrook Drive. I can't figure that out because it's on Washington Street, but I may not know the area. Does, does Susan Walzak live on, on Washington or Colebrook? Does Sensible, John Sensible, live on Washington or Colebrook? And it's, the four houses on the, on the lower right, bills, seem to be on Washington Street with a Colebrook address.
You're correct.
Anyway.
And I know three of them on the other side there are on the opposite side of Washington Avenue because they're friends.
So there might be a, a map or a plan amendment that maybe needed to update the...
In connection with the revised application.
Correct. So that they can take a look at the, the tax ID and the associated, the legal address that's associated with it.
Yeah, I just, I mean, if it's wrong, we could make it right because we have time.
Correct.
So...
And in some instances, there can be instances where the street address or the mailing address is one thing and the legal address, as far as a real property system, can be something different. So there are those differences sometimes through redevelopment or history of development of property.
So at this point in time, unless there's more questions, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Well, hold on. In regards to PB 1702-2, upon the request of Costas Engineering, acting as agent for St. Cetera Ticoito Roman Catholic Church for subdivision approval, to subdivide the 6.37 acre church property to create a 0.951 acre parcel containing the existing three-story school building on premises 4530 St. Paul Boulevard in an R1 residential district, that it be tabled at this time and in addition, that the map be reviewed and updated as needed for property addresses on Washington. With that, anybody have a second? And with that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, please say nay. Nobody's absent and nobody abstains. Thank you.
Do you think, do you think Pete Morris is watching us?
For those that are leaving, I'd please ask, did you try to keep as quiet as possible as we continue the meeting? Any conversations, please take it far enough away so that we can continue. Thank you. With that... Everybody who's pleased leaving, please leave the room so we can continue with the meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
With that, Michelle, could you introduce the next case? Thank you. Thank you very much.
I don't know if it's tabled. Um, next item on the agenda is a request by Lantech, acting as agent for Angelo Licoridalo Smetal Holdings LLC for SEAKER determination of significance to subdivide 63 lots and construct 62 townhouse units on premises of 160 Denzmore Road in an R1 residential district. This is a zoning board of appeals referral, case number PZB 1504-4.
So I think, do we have to actually take it off the table? Yep. So can we have a motion to take this off?
I would move that in reference to case PZB 1504, that that be moved out to the table for consideration.
Second?
Second.
Please proceed.
All right. Good evening. I'm, as you know, Alan Knopf for the applicant. We are here, as you know, we've been tabled for a long time. We did a lot of, spent a lot of money on testing and all. Hopefully, we've resolved the issue as far as the geotechnical and the drainage. We'd asked the board tonight to make the determination of significance. We don't believe there is any potentially significant impact between the, the water, the drainage issues. We believe we've satisfactorily resolved. We've got a preliminary SWIP. Everything will be handled in accordance with DEC regulations. We've shown the, on the geotechnical that there's not, we, we, our plan really will not cause any danger to the slope. We did get the commitment from the neighboring property owner, Mr. Bettenger, that he would allow an easement in case there's any overflow in that unlikely event. We understand that, you know, any approval will be contingent on that. That is part of our, our project plan. We did a comprehensive traffic study that shows there really is no, no kind of significant traffic issue from, from the proposal. So we would hope that the board, we've been working on this for over two years, we hope the board would make the negative declaration because we just don't think there's any significant impact. And then we can move on to the real issues, which will be in front of the zoning board to determine, to act on the applications for area and use variances. So unless you, Ed Martin from Lantex is here, so if he have any specific technical questions, you know, he could address them or I, I could address any other questions.
With that, does the board have any questions?
I have not.
Or do you want to do, you want to review the...
I think there's a representative of the town engineer that's here to give an overview as well.
So that's Kathy Spencer. And if, just as a matter of recollection, it's been a bit of a time, but Kathy was working with, with this, with this board and helping the town staff. Kathy and I have been working together on preparing the sort of evaluation of environmental impacts. And so Kathy is going to go through some of the highlights of the narrative that this board has already reviewed.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kathy Spencer. I'm the principal environmental analyst with Lobella Associates. Many of you know my colleague, Mike Chaffron. He's generally the liaison with the planning board, so I don't think I've ever officially appeared before you. I've been before the town board and the zoning board of appeals, so I'm happy to be here tonight to review the environmental evaluation of the Denzmore Road project. As Carrie said, town staff brought Lobella in pretty much as soon as this project came before the town, which it started with the zoning board application. Carrie and I and other town staff have been working hand in hand since then to prepare an environmental review in compliance with the State Environmental Quality Act or SEAKER, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. As I believe you are aware, this project has gone through a very stringent environmental review. All the pertinent environmental factors have been thoroughly evaluated. As the project has evolved over time, the town has requested additional information and studies from the applicant, which they've provided. They've answered our questions. They've answered questions to the answers that they gave us to the original questions. So it was, it has been a process, but as we got more information, more questions were raised and that kind of information has all been provided at this point. All this has resulted in a very detailed environmental record for the project. And I'd just like to go through very briefly what that record contains. So as you know, the environmental assessment form is the SEAKER document that has all the record of the review. Part one of that form is prepared by the applicant. It has background information on the project and the environmental setting. The applicant did prepare the long environmental assessment form at the direction of the town so that we would have a complete set of answers on the entire range of issues that might be involved. In addition, the applicant provided some appendancy material, further studies like Alan referred to on traffic, stormwater, that kind of thing, the steep slopes. Part two of the environmental assessment format, part two and three are the, are the planning board's responsibility as lead agency. So that is why town staff and your environmental consultant, me at Lobella, have been working to get drafts to you, which you've reviewed over time. Part two, as you recall, is a checklist of all the different categories of possible environmental impacts. The check mark is to indicate the magnitude of the impact. Is it no or small impact or is it possibly moderate to large impact? Part three of the environmental assessment form is the part where the planning board has to issue their determination of significance and set forth the rationale for that determination in a narrative-type attachment. We, just by way of background information for anyone who's listening, there's two types of determinations of significance. The negative declaration, which indicates no large adverse impacts have been identified and therefore SEAKER and the environmental review process closes. Or the positive declaration, which says one or more significant adverse environmental impacts have been identified and therefore go ahead and prepare an environmental impact Over the last several months, you... Over the last several months, you, as a board, have seen drafts of the parts two and three, which is your responsibility, the town's responsibility to prepare. Those drafts were prepared by our team at Lobella, working in conjunction with the town staff. We reviewed all the technical documentation and the, the DEC guidance on its Seeker website and as well as in the regulations to try to assess the magnitude and significance of these potential impacts associated with the development. So at this point, all three parts of the environmental assessment form have been drafted, and the planning board should have in front of it enough information to make their determination of significance. I'm going to specifically refer to the part three narrative, which provides some of the rationale for your decision-making. And what I'd like to do with your forbearance is to read some excerpts from the part three. It should be all in your packet. This is just for the benefit of all of us here and anyone watching to indicate how some of the more significant issues were addressed. I will note that these excerpts are excerpts. The entire discussion is provided in the part three. You have it in front of you, so they may sound like excerpts, and that's because they are, and all the context will not be surrounding them. With regard to impact on land, I'm going to read the following excerpt. As detailed in the part, in the EAF Part One Attachment, soil testing and studies performed at the site resulted in the following findings. No development is proposed on the steep slope e-pod. No development is proposed in the quote "transition zone" unquote, defined in the town code as an area at the top of the slope containing soil classes with moderate to severe limitations for development and recreational use. The quote angle of repose unquote that would result from the proposed development was it interpreted as no steeper than 27 degrees from horizontal. This is less than the angle of repose of 32 degrees, which is considered conservative and reasonable quote unquote for the specific soils on-site by the applicant's geotechnical consultant. The applicant's geotechnical consultant concludes that quote, "The proposed structures will have no significant effect on the stability of the existing slopes and that the slopes will have no significant effect on the proposed structure." Structures, unquote. Based on the above, no large adverse impacts have been identified to the steep slope e-pod, and the project satisfies the intent of the town code to prevent significant impacts to steep slopes and transition zones. I'm going to continue with impacts on land. A stormwater management facility is being proposed to infiltrate much of the runoff from the development. The original design of the project demonstrated structures and the pond were positioned beyond the natural angle of repose of the slope. The subsequent repositioning of the pond farther away from the crest further decreases the risk associated with slope stability. The geotechnical analysis of the site determined that the vegetative cover established over the years further reinforces the slope and concluded that the proposed development will not alter or diminish the stability of the slope. In response to town engineer concerns about the previously designed discharge flow from the facility to the crest of the slope, the design now proposes to pipe the flows to the base of the slope via three six-inch diameter at-grade flexible polyethylene pipes. This would minimize disturbance to the vegetation and the slope. Fifty feet of each pipe will be perforated in a manner to distribute the pipe's flow uniformly over its length, i.e., no point source discharge from the pipes would occur. It can be expected that surface runoff will occur to the adjacent property and ultimately Denzmore Creek. The discharge will occur during the 10, 25, and 100-year storm events, when the area will be experiencing other runoff. The developer has indicated that he will obtain an easement permitting the additional discharge from the site to enter the adjacent parcel. Future monitoring will be addressed in the SWIP, which stands for Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which will outline requirements for the town and/or its designee to conduct periodic site inspections. Any future corrective measures would be subject to the town and/or town engineer review. That was the longest section of excerpts. I'm now going to read excerpts on impact on surface water. Stormwater drainage will be managed in accordance with DEC regulations. A preliminary stormwater pollution prevention plan has been prepared and provided by the applicant. The site soils have a high infiltration rate, and it is expected that the stormwater facility will infiltrate storms at the one-year storm event. Revised stormwater calculations show that discharge is likely to occur at the 10-year storm recurrence interval and above. The proposed stormwater system will significantly reduce the volume from the pond and peak rate of discharge compared to current undeveloped conditions. Given the decrease in runoff volume, a 97% reduction, the development's basin design will not result in an increased risk of flooding in off-site areas. No significant adverse impacts to Denzmore Creek have been identified. I'm now going to read some excerpts from the impact on plants and animals. The portion of the woodlot, woodlot e-pod at the project site is disconnected from the larger portion of this e-pod to the east by the 590 highway corridor. The proposed development will result in the removal of approximately 1.1 acres of trees/vegetation within the woodland e-pod. The older-growth trees on the 30% steep slopes will remain undisturbed. Tree removal will occur primarily within the western flatter portion of the e-pod area, where younger-growth trees have been documented by the applicant. The applicant indicates that quote, "Where feasible, signature mature trees will be left untouched," unquote. According to aerial photos, the majority of the subject site was generally open and used for farming or trail riding at least through the 1970s, so it is unlikely that significant old-growth forest or trees are present. DEC also indicates the presence of a significant natural community, rich mesophytic forest, on or near the subject site. This likely correlates with the shoreline forest to the east along Arundacoye Bay, possibly extending along the banks of Denzmore Creek. Given the age of the wooded and scrubby vegetated, vegetated area to be removed for the development, it is unlikely that significant impacts to rich mesophytic forest ecosystem will occur. However, no onsite species field review has been undertaken. No threatened or endangered species have been indicated on the site by New York State Impact on transportation. A series of traffic-related assessments have been undertaken to evaluate whether the proposed development will result in significant adverse impacts on traffic. In addition to the morning and afternoon peak travel hours, the time period around school dismissal at the East Arundacoye Middle School opposite the subject site on Denzmore Road was also evaluated. Traffic study results indicate that even with the additional volume of traffic generated by the development, the present good or very good operation of the intersection level of service A and B will not degrade at any of the peak travel hours. A supplemental study of the intersection of Denzmore Road and Norton Road similarly indicates that the additional traffic generated by the development will not change the present operation of the intersection level of service A, B, and C during the morning peak hour. The applicant has also committed to extending the existing public sidewalk along Denzmore Road, frontage of the subject property, 558 linear feet of five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk, which will improve pedestrian resources in the area. In addition, a 15-foot-wide frontage easement will be granted to the town of Arundacoye as requested by the town Public Works Department so that the Denzmore Road right-of-way can be increased to 50 feet as it is north of the subject property. Impact on noise, odor, and light. Once constructed, it is not anticipated that the proposed residential development will result in any noise effects that are inconsistent with other residential developments throughout the town of Arundacoye, and therefore no large or significant adverse noise impacts have been identified. No pole-mounted lights are proposed within, within the development. Outdoor lighting will be limited to a small LED fixture mounted to the garage portion of each structure approximately 10 feet above grade. Lights are downward directed, and off-site light spill will not occur. Existing area residences, residences to the north will be screened from potential lighting impacts by the 30-foot wooded buffer along the northern site boundary. The next section is consistency with community plans. The applicant has provided the following information with regard to the consistency with the comprehensive plan. This is a quote. "The project would be consistent with the town of Arundacoye comprehensive master plan update," quote unquote, "a comprehensive plan. It would help meet the goal to expand the current range of options, cost, size, and type density, to maintain healthy neighborhoods, increase property values, and ensure high quality for housing of all incomes," unquote. That's comprehensive plan at 3-13. "The project would help quote 'ensure a range of housing options for new residents,' unquote, and provide housing opportunities attractive to seniors." It is acknowledged that the above language within the comprehensive plan does not preclude the contemplation of the type of residential development currently proposed at the site. It is important to note that the comprehensive plan also indicates that residential development, particularly high-density residential development, conforms with the goals of the comprehensive plan only if it is located in areas with the resources, infrastructure, infrastructure, and characteristics necessary to support it. "The proposed development is not consistent with the town's R1 zoning of the site, and a use variance is needed. The decision as to whether a use variance will be granted for the property rests with the zoning board of appeals." With regard to potential environmental impacts, the New York State DEC's EAF Workbook Guidance indicates that the need for a use variance is likely to be associated with moderate to large impacts. Given that the proposed action involves residential development and is not considered quote "largely or totally incompatible with land use plans or zoning in the community," unquote, the impacts may be considered moderate in this case. The evaluation of the product's consistency with community character was also taken into account in this assessment. The final section that I want to read some excerpts from is consistency with community character. "The discussion of consistency with community character begins with the recognition of the following. The proposed project includes the development of 62 units, which are characterized as row or townhouse dwellings or multifamily dwellings. The current land use of the subject property can be classified as undeveloped open area with a mixture of woods and scrubby vegetation. The subject property is surrounded by a single-family residential neighborhood to the north and northwest, East Arundacoye School campuses to the west and southwest, Denzmore Creek and multifamily housing to the south, and the Route 590 divided highway corridor to the east. The development of the 62 proposed row or townhouse dwellings represents a change in the intensity of land use compared to the current undeveloped nature of the proposed site and will result in a change to the visual character of the area. However, the proposed development is considered consistent with the overall mixed-use generally, generally residential setting of this area of the town of Arundacoye. Given the varying sizes, heights, dimensions, and massing of the existing land uses, the proposed development would not be in sharp contrast to the predominant architectural scale or character of the area. Trees, green spaces, and other landscaping are included in the design to soften and enhance the appearance of the overall development. The most significant wooded areas along the northern property boundary and on the steep slopes to the south will also remain undisturbed. However, these natural areas will be separated from each other and fragmented. The proposed development will not create a significant demand for additional community services, such as schools, police, fire, compared to similar residential developments, and will likely involve a lower demand on school resources based on the anticipated demographics of the likely residents. While the proposed action will result in the conversion of an existing wooded/scrub area to new residential development, the subject property is not designated parkland, recreational land, or publicly owned land, and therefore the action will not interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially designated public resources. Based on the information provided above, as well as the guidance provided in New York State DEC's EAF Workbook for Consistency with Community Character, no large adverse impacts have been identified." This concludes the excerpts that I wish to read from, to you from the part three narrative. These excerpts and the remainder of the part three narrative generally support the issuance of a negative declaration as the Seeker Determination of Significance. However, as the Seeker lead agency, the final decision for that determination of significance rests with you, and the draft that we have prepared can at this time be, you commented upon, we can modify some of the language in order to reflect the position of the board on this project. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or if you have comments on the writing or the, the statements made in the part three, we'll, we'll be happy to entertain those at this time.
I'd like to say, "Well done."
Oh, thank you.
Really. Just a question I have. The first line of the last paragraph on page five, there's a reference to Denzmore Road and Norton Road. Is it not Norton Street?
Yeah. It is.
Okay. We'll make that correction. You're absolutely right.
You got eagle eyes tonight.
Ears, it's the ears.
Any other questions?
I have a couple. Sorry. I'll just try to do these quickly. The impact on land segment where we start off the, in response to town engineer's concerns. I got it on a page three. I don't know that it's the same for everybody. It's talking about the 50 feet of pipe. Do we know what 50 feet that is? Is that the first 50 feet of the pipe? Is that the last 50 feet of the pipe?
It's the last 50, the perforated section?
Right.
Yeah, it's at the base of the slope. So it, the pipe will be intact all the way down the slope, and then it will separate, the three pipes will go in separate directions and will be perforated so that the water infiltrates over a wide area.
Okay, I just wasn't clear by reading that and wanted to ask. Also, what's the distance of that slope? I know I physically have been there and I've seen it. How many feet does it actually travel down this way?
The length of the pipe, I don't know that offhand. I, Mike Chaffron is on vacation this week, so I'm not here to...
Ed Martin might be able to answer that question.
I'll just...
It'd be, and also what might likely be either in the utility plan as well.
It is, it's in five-foot segments going down the hill. If I count those, I can figure that out.
Okay.
Right, never mind. I remember reading this and I can...
He thinks it's a little over 100 feet.
Okay, so the 150 feet that we're discussing. Also, on the, the rock that's being talked about putting over the pipe?
The rock?
Yeah, there's...
I don't think there's anything over the pipe on the slope. At the, at the base of the slope, there's a, I believe there might be a gravel base.
Yeah. How do we know when that's installed that that's not going to cause any damage? Is that part of the town inspector going to be doing that?
Yes, that would be a couple of triggers for that. That would be during, as part of the SWIP inspections, the stormwater prevention. That would be documented, and it's also part of the site construction and the inspections that would be taking place if the project were to, to get to that point. So that's a construction phase issue that would be fairly closely monitored.
I figured it would be, but I, just for my own self, I wanted to ask. On the impact on traffic, traffic studies don't include pedestrian traffic. Is that my understanding?
They're mostly deal with level of service for people driving on the roads. That's the focus. I, I cannot recall offhand whether there were pedestrian...
I don't remember.
Resources looked at in that study. Sometimes we talk about crosswalks and... Sometimes we talk about crosswalks, and I would assume with the school there that there's pretty good pedestrian resources, but the new sidewalk along that part, you know, opposite the school, I guess that would be an improvement of pedestrian resources. The focus of a traffic study, though, is delay for drivers driving through intersections.
Right, okay, so it doesn't include the pedestrians. Just a one point that I know that the 30-foot wide, or no, I'm sorry, the buffer on the no need for mitigating circumstances on the second driveway, they'll be able to see pedestrians because there are kids over there, they're going to be on bikes, they're going to be doing things.
Oh, the site distance?
Yeah. I've got it on page six, second paragraph.
I remember reading that.
The available site distance along Denzmore Road is the way the paragraph...
Right, right.
About halfway down.
I guess what we've heard from the applicant is that they are going to maintain the vegetation so that it doesn't create any more site obstacles. By law, they have the available site distance that meets requirements, but just to be certain, they're going to make sure that no vegetation is going to grow into the, which would, what would block your site as you're approaching those.
Super. And then, impact on noise, odor, and light, I'm going to go to almost the last paragraph on there, the last sentence. The 30-foot buffer, my understanding is that it doesn't, isn't actually a wooded buffer the entire way because of the movement of the pond?
It's actually, the buffer next to the pond has been reduced to 15 feet, but there'll be a pond in front of it. There won't be houses with lights.
Well, we can, to describe it totally as a wooded buffer is no longer accurate.
No, it still will be wooded, it'll only be 15, this is my understanding.
But there won't be woods in a pond.
Right, but I think that part of that section says, "Existing area residences to the north will be screened from potential lighting impacts, there aren't going to be lights around the pond."
So there'll be a 15-foot width of trees where there's new development, and then when it gets to the pond, that width of trees, whether you call it woods or not, but there'll be some trees, it'll only be 15 feet wide because the pond had to be moved back to get the stormwater.
It's a maintenance issue for the residents also. I mean, it's a maintenance for us to allow them to build this. They need the stormwater pond.
They need the stormwater pond, and they need it positioned back further away from the slope. That was a big issue, and that was one of the things that caused the extra geotechnical studies and...
I agree with it, but I just, because it says it here, I don't want everybody to think that that's, it's a true 30 feet.
Right, no, by the pond, the houses that would back up to the pond will have 15 feet of trees instead of 30, that's correct.
I will keep my questions limited to that.
I do want to make mention, too, that it is a dry pond.
Right.
Right, it's not, it's not going to be a pond as we conventionally think of a pond. It's going to be a dry depression that will fill with water during a storm event.
Right. Yes, and, but there won't be development, there won't be houses there.
Correct, there won't be any lights around our pond.
Right.
Right. Thank you, Kathy.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a comment or a couple comments. First, and I'm going to ask you to pronounce your last name because I don't want to kill it again. Angelo...
Lee Chardello.
Lee Chardello, I get it, okay. I'd like to thank you for doing that extra testing that we asked you to perform. It actually has helped quite a bit in our seeker determination. It's helped us review, the more information, the better. Oh, yes?
I'm so sorry, I just wanted to interrupt with a quick question or a quick verification. So the 30-foot buffer does separate between where the buildings would be located and the neighbors to the north. In the area where the pond is located and the buffer reduces to 15, there are no houses right there, so that's why that statement still applies.
Yep, no, I...
I'm sorry. I was afraid I had, I was reading that, I thought I missed it as well.
Absolutely, we walked the property, I know exactly what it's going to look like, I just didn't want everybody out there thinking that we were allowing 30 feet of wooded area the entire way. It's going to have to be cleared so it can actually function for its purpose when the rain hits, if it ever does, was my only point. I think that it's a good, good thing. Sorry, Michael.
Don't be sorry. Thank you, Angelo, for the supplemental testing, and thank you very much to John Strava and Lantec as a whole. John took a few of us out on the tour and it definitely helped with the visualization of this. It put a lot of my concerns at ease, and thank you, Carrie, also for adding that one sentence to the EAF. That was a major concern and that's been mitigated. Otherwise, it's gone through a lot of environmental review. I've been through most of it. It has had the hard look. It's not, this has not been something that's been tabled and not looked at while it was on the table. I've read through this a couple times, so thank you everyone for your diligent work.
Thank you, I echo everything Michael said, thank you for saying that. With that, is there any more questions? Anything from the staff? Applicant?
No, thank you. We appreciate all the attention and the hard look that both LaBella and the board is taking.
And you are aware of this letter we received from one of the residents dated February 27?
No. I'm not.
Am I copy? I'm going to abstain from this. You don't want to? No.
Give you a second just to do that, see if you have any concerns. Okay, just wanted to make sure you saw that.
Yeah, again, I think these are issues for the zoning board, really not really for the environmental impact, it's really a matter of addressing by the zoning board.
With that, I'd like to entertain a motion on seeker.
I thought you were going to entertain a party.
Okay, I'll make the motion. In regards to case number PZB 1504-4, request by Lantec acting as agent for Angelo Lee Chardello, Smart Holdings LLC for seeker determination of significance to subdivide 63 lots and construct 62 townhouse units on premises 160 Denzmore Road in an R1 residential district. In regards to the seeker, this would be an unlisted action negative declaration.
I would second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to abstain, just since I have not been here long enough to feel that I have enough information on this topic.
So with one, two, three, four, five, six ayes, one abstain, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And by that, so you've adopted the Part II and Part III as part of the resolution, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate your hard work on this, and we'll move on to the zoning board and hopefully we'll be back to see you sometime in the near future.
Somehow, Alan, I...
I'm glad you stayed with the project.
I still think you forgot their property.
You want to come back next month, you're still welcome.
Thank you.
You can come even if you don't have a case in front of you.
Maybe I'll watch on TV.
There is no more business before the board.
I motion to end the meeting, adjourned. That's the word I was looking for.
You all second that. Anybody else want?
Thank you very much, sir. I know we're still on TV, so.